Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now in executive session. Uh opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both in carry. Now in executive session. Okay. Alright, good evening everyone. Today is Tuesday, July twenty second. Uh welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's special board of education meeting tonight. Like the called meeting to order and can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons?
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to return to open session if we can please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I think we need to modify the agenda by adding in public participation. I think it was an oversight that we didn't add it in here and I didn't pick up on it earlier. So I want to amend the agenda to add it. So can I have a motion to amend the agenda? Yep, can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved, Tibbs.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to 4.3, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'm out. Don't we need to also add a second exec session?
Oh, that's not on here either, so.
And we had a second executive session.
Thanks, Carl.
So this is going to be a separate. So we also need to modify the agenda by adding a second executive session at the end. So can I get a motion to amend the agenda?
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any other motion for agenda changes? Alright, so can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved, Tibbs.
Second, Carl.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 5.1 Superintendent's Report.
Yes, good evening, Board trustees and community. Two things that I wanted to share with the community and the board. The first one is just a quick update on the federal freeze on title funds. This past week, I've met with several Duchess superintendents. We all attended Governor Hochul's presentation in Kingston at the YMCA. Additionally, I sent three letters to Congressman Pat Ryan, as well as Senator Hinchey and Assemblyperson Dee Barrett as well, just to emphasize the need for us to have those funds and to pour upon them to request that those funds be unfrozen. And so they have responded to us. So we will be setting up a meeting with them just to kind of just share the impact of those dollars for the community to know that the title funds are usually intended to support our teachers, to provide professional development, or sometimes the neediest students. And so that's one of the titles that are title funds that are being frozen. Additionally, we have some programs that we also offer through the various title grants. And so we'll keep the board and the community apprised. But right now, we're definitely advocating for those funds to be released. The second piece that I wanted to share is just.
Just on that, if it's not resolved by the next board meeting, can we see like a bigger like impact statement of what that means for us?
So right now, just quick, just in terms of quick numbers, it's approximately just under 300,000 that we would be seeing an impact, a negative impact on. But we'll certainly work with Linda to make sure we provide that information to the board and the community. So today, I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that I shared on July 1st at the rework meeting. But before I do that, I wanted to share this image because I know that there is information, sometimes misinformation or information that's missing key data points. And so there is a danger to only having one side of the story. And so in this image, you can see one point of view. And this is what the information is being shared. But when you flip to the next slide, you actually see the bigger picture. And this is actually what's indeed occurring. And so today, my intention is to share with the board the facts of what is being proposed on today's agenda. And so as I mentioned before, we're really trying to streamline the roles and responsibilities in the organization. There were many responsibilities that were inappropriately placed in different divisions because of the need at the time and understand those decisions that were made. But now we have an opportunity to right-size it, the ship. And we're taking that opportunity to do so so that the system is more efficient and effective. Additionally, we had some recommendations from some of the audits that we had. And so we're looking to implement some of those changes that were recommended from an outside audit to support our HR division to provide a more comprehensive set of supports for our staff across the district. So the deputy superintendent position encompassed all of these roles and responsibilities. And so with the plan that I proposed back on July 1st, it really is taking these responsibilities, not filling the deputy position, which is a $275,000 savings, and redistributing, reallocating these positions among two different divisions, HR and student supports. And so the key changes are the deputy superintendent will not be filled. We will be re-titling the assistant superintendent for PPS to student supports and elevating the chief of HR, executive director, to assistant superintendent for PD for the reason of taking an entire position, dissolving it as to not fill it for next year and redistributing those responsibilities. The last one is highlighted in yellow because we are working with civil service to make a determination and we'll keep the board apprised on that matter. So the reallocation looks like this. For student supports, student supports will take on the work of curriculum and programming, multilingual learners, homeschooling, UPK, compliance monitoring, all the accountability work that is entailed in that division, as well as New York State testing and reporting. In terms of the new assistant superintendent for HR and PD, when we look at the division or excuse me, the positions regionally and take a look at some of the roles and responsibilities for an assistant superintendent, the role as it was written did not encompass these areas. As a result, we're including professional development across the district. That's an area that we have been cited for in the audit of making sure that we provide PD opportunities for every bargaining unit and intentional PD, PD that will really support them to do their best work. My learning plan, which is all about professional development and keeping track of the hours that our teachers are devoting to their craft and being able to keep track of what's submitted, what's approved. And moving on to Title IX investigations, that would also shift from the deputy superintendent to the HR division, APPR, in-service credits and leadership development, which would be shared. In terms of the financial impact, so as I stated, by not filling the deputy superintendent position, there's a savings of $275,000. We would be taking all those responsibilities. So about 30% of the workload for the assistant superintendent for student support services will be increasing. So just imagine you have a role. We're going to be increasing the amount of responsibilities. As a result, it requires compensation for those additional duties. In terms of the assistant superintendent for HR, as it was written, the executive director is a lower title than the assistant superintendent, which at the time required a certain salary. But when you elevate it to an assistant superintendent and you look at it regionally, there's a parity adjustment that we need to consider so that the roles and responsibilities align with the new title. As a result, that does require a, a higher increase to competitively put our, our position uh, regionally. And then the last, the last one is, is the one that we're still working. We're um, estimating no more than fifteen thousand dollars for the accountability um, manager role, uh, which we're working with civil service on. Um, the net savings would be a total of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand uh, for this year and years moving forward. In terms of the benefit, um, as I stated, we're going to be realigning uh, the roles and responsibilities to make the system more efficient. Um, we're looking to integrate our student supports so that uh, we have a leader who's able to work with all at um, facets of the student support services and be able to work with the team there to make sure our students get, get what they need. Um, and then uh, ensuring that we continue to provide targeted support uh, and supervision for, for leaders across the district. And, and then, as I stated before, the annualized uh, savings of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So just, I'll pause there, um, not sure if anyone has any questions. Other than that, that concludes um, my items for today.
Um, just can I make a comment? So just historically, this has been, um, every couple of years, a new superintendent will restructure. This is not like some big unknown thing. Um, back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, we did the opposite. We added an administrative position. And uh, and I think a lot of the reasoning, a lot of it, uh, we did it was because of COVID and there were all these um, instructional expectations. So it made sense to add it there. Um, I, I was a little nervous when this first came up because, you know, when you take away a position, you want to make sure that everything is still being covered. Um, so, but it makes sense and, and I would think people would be thrilled that we have a net savings of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year and we're getting rid of an administrative position because that's what I keep hearing is that we're heavy on the administrators. So it, for me, it makes sense, we're out of COVID, hopefully we're never going back there, that we would kind of shift back to a structure that was similar to before COVID, when we had one less administrator. The difference is, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like it's just the allocation of duties might be a little bit different, which is why that HR position is being retitled. And the salary is changing. Enjoy.
Correct.
Okay.
Cool.
As far as I, sorry, as far as I can think, the other distinction is that we're elevating HR kind of roles to the level of assistant superintendent.
Yes.
Which acknowledges the importance of those duties in maintaining the district.
That's, that's a great point. If, if we think back on the HR audit that was conducted last year, they talked a lot about shifting from compliance to transformative work. And that requires a higher level skillset and we've acknowledged that. Um, and this will continue to allow us to enhance um, the level of leadership that we need in order for us to actualize a lot of the, of, of the recommendations, start implementing a lot of the recommendations that came from, from that audit.
And I just want to add too, that with the salary, right? Like I know a lot of folks are saying, oh, he's getting a big raise and big raise. But if we didn't have Ryan on board and we were to post this, the number we would post is what's in the agenda today. That would be the starting point for an assistant superintendent uh, for HR, that, that job responsibility. So it, that's, you know, that's what would happen if we had nobody. We would post at that number and, you know, hopefully get a good candidate. We have a good candidate already picked out that happened recently. So um, that's just, probably the worst thing is poor timing because of the circumstances that caused you to look at the reorganization. Um, but, but if this happened, you know, three months ago, the job would have been posted as this.
Correct.
Right, so that's kind of where, you know, kind of people understand that it's really what that job would be posted for.
And following up on that, I know there's been some discussion of the raise versus this increase. And I think to your point, Mike, ultimately what matters is the bottom line and number. Some people might say the raise is too high, but if we lower the raise to get to the appropriate number, we'd have to increase.
Right.
This adjustment. So ultimately what matters is what's that end number to make us competitive for this kind of, kind of duties.
So, and what I would say is, again, if I've said in the past, I like the idea of the restructuring. I think it's a good idea from Dr. Roman. I said that, I was very clear about that. Um, I think that we certainly can streamline our administrators, especially at the district level. I think that's all a good thing. I think it's long overdue. You know, there has been concern, we all know, at our last board meeting, we had people come to the mic. We had people email, you know, and so forth. So it's, people raise these concerns, so I think we should talk about those. And that's what we're doing right now. So again, the perception right now, as you mentioned, is concerning the two different positions. Um, and yes, yes, an assistant superintendent has a certain, you know, average salary across the county, but you have to factor in the size of the district. You have to factor in how many years somebody's been in that position and so forth. So um, so what I would say is that um, you know, a lot of people are concerned not only about the raise, but the sequence of events. I know, you know, there were some things that happened recently. We talked about that and so forth. It wasn't, uh, it wasn't optimal. It wasn't optimal. Um, but with that said, we have somebody who I think we're happy with right now. I, I think is, has been here, but it's been here a very, very short time. And I think it's somebody who hopefully will grow and continue with our district and so forth. Um, you know, the reason I'm, I'm against this, I'm for this restructuring in general, but I'm against the HR part, you know, for those reasons. And then, you know, I think first of all, for an administrator, um, there should be something in a contract that if there's a raise, you know, it's kind of like when I used to score teachers and give teachers their teacher scores. If that teacher wasn't in for at least five months of the year, they didn't get a score. So that's a whole nother question we have to look into is in the contract itself. If somebody has been with us only for two months, even if they did a great job, you know, to get a big raise and then a different raise for another title, the public perception of that is, it's very concerning and so forth. So um, then there's the question, as was mentioned, that some community members have brought up, why wasn't this posted? Why wasn't it advertised? And yes, yes, um, if we advertise something like that, that salary in that ballpark could um, and most likely would be um, more of the pay rate, but you could get somebody who's been doing HR for, you know, ten years, fifteen years. So um, so these are some of the things again, that we've heard in this room from people coming up to the microphone, we've received emails and so forth. Um, so that's why I'm just, I'm against that part of the restructuring. Um, the way I was raised, where I've worked is, you know, you go to a job, you sign a contract, you do a good job in your first contract, and then you move forward. And then, of course, if you're doing good, then there's raises. That's the American way, I think I mentioned last time. It's not, you know, just got here and then, then there's raise and second raise. It's just, I, I don't think it was the proper sequence of events. And, and maybe the community was right that maybe it should have been advertised for a little more um, transparency. And maybe there would have been some other candidates too. But again, it's not anything personal against the HR director. I, I, I think he's doing a good job and so forth, but it's just the way this is going about and the perception of, I'm not for that part of the restructuring plan respectfully.
Okay.
I, I would, I would just say that I, I understand your points and I respect your position. I would not characterize it as a raise and then another raise. Because it's a restructuring, it's not as though you get a contract, you get a raise in the contract. You get a contract, now we're giving a new contract, a different contract with different duties. That's where the rationale comes in. That's why I'm, I'm in favor of this because we've collected data on what the numbers are in the county. And this seems to me the right salary for those duties.
And respectfully, again, I, I think we're, we're having some, you know, semantics here and so forth. Um, the other part of the semantics going on, I think, is the, the savings, the savings. When we say savings, what I think we should clarify is there's a savings to the district where we can take that two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and earmark that for other things, hopefully for children down the line. So it's a savings for the district. It's not a savings for the local community taxpayer because it is in the budget. It happened after the budget. So it's not a savings per se, you would think, for the taxpayers. It's a saving for the district to use. Um, and then that goes into the general fund. When it goes to the general fund with few restrictions, it could be used based on the approval of the board, recommendation superintendent, for really anything. Um, we've talked about, and Dr. Roman mentioned about how there's concerns about some of the federal funds being cut. Um, you know, that's another discussion down the line. I'd like to see if there's a savings for the district of this amount, having that specifically earmarked and having that discussion with the board for, you know, specific things for students. But uh, when we say savings, just understand that there's some people in our community, we just see things a little different when they say savings. They're saying savings to them, the taxpayers. What we're saying is savings for the district that we can put it into the general fund. That's all.
And just to follow up on that, so people understand, there are savings every day in the district. This is just one of the savings. If we have a vacancy for, you know, a PE teacher in the school and we can't fill that for three months, well, we have three months' worth of savings in, in the budget. If gas prices are cheaper than what we budgeted for, that's savings in the budget, right? All these savings at the end of the year would, we look at and sometimes we vote to say, let's put that in the capital reserve or it goes in the, you know, fund balance that we use to offset the next year's budget when it comes out to say, well, rather than raise taxes this much, we're going to raise taxes this much and pull from the fund balance. And that's a continuous cycle, year after year after year, that happens, right? And I don't know if we could specifically earmark savings for, there's, because there's, you know, Gatsby rules that we have to follow. I don't know if we could specifically earmark it, but at the end, like it would come out, like if we don't get these federal funds, well, the numbers look almost the same. So it would lessen the burden of that somewhere in the magic budget that, you know, like the, the codes that you do, right? It may have to still go to general fund, but to cover the savings, it has to come out as some other fund. But that's for Linda to figure out when the time comes. But it is truly savings in the budget, right? I mean, and, and again, we have savings every single day, right? We go to buy paper and we budgeted, paper is going to cost us ten dollars a box and we go to buy it at Staples and, and it's nine dollars a box. Well, that's savings, right? That's savings to the budget that we then put, put in there. And, you know, hopefully at the end of the year, there's more savings than overruns. And, because sometimes things are more expensive. Sometimes we budget for ten dollars a box and it's fifteen dollars a box. Well, what are you going to do? You, you need the paper. So all these things balance out throughout the year. And at the end, knock on wood, we've been pretty lucky that we have this extra money at the end that we then put into the, to the reserve accounts.
Just to follow up, so it's clear to the, to the public, I'm looking at the. Um, in fact, this year, the tax increase was less than the cap would have allowed us because of both savings and the health of the, of the general fund. No one can predict a year from now whether this two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars will have made a difference that we don't have to go to the cap, but it's part of the overall savings as you point out.
That's just a normal budget cycle planning, you know, balance sheet at the end of the year, right?
I do, I do, just want to say a couple of things. Um, first of all, thank you for the, the dialogue. I think that this is really healthy uh, for us and for our organization. Um, the second piece is to your point, um, Trustee Spence, um, the, the community, I, I want to say thank you for the engagement uh, from our community. We had at least, I, I had at least four questions from different community members uh, that were forwarded and we were able to respond to each of those uh, sets of questions. And that's, that's what we welcome. We welcome those questions. We want to provide as a pi- picture, insinuate it, uh, a clear uh, picture, a clear story of, of what these numbers entail. Um, the other piece too, that I do want to highlight is in this slide here, um, whenever there's a position, um, whenever we have a position and we're adding additional responsibilities to someone's plate already, typically if you have a collective bargaining agreement, um, what happens is there is what's called impact bargaining, which means that you are negotiating with the union because you're adding X amount of percent of, of new work to that plate. And so unfortunately, central administrators are at-will employees. So we don't have that, that same protection. Uh, but this, this really allows us to be fair in the compensation because we're taking a, a full position. We're reallocating those responsibilities to, to, to two different divisions. And we want to make sure that we compensate those individuals um, fairly. Um, so those are the two things that I, I wanted to, to highlight.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, maybe I just have a different philosophy. I've always been raised, you know, you get an opportunity, you take a job, you know, they say run with it, show us what you can do. And then after several years, then you get the raise. That's just the way I was raised.
Um, yeah, and the thing to think about is like, if, if we didn't have a person and we needed a person today, it would be posted at that number. So that person's not coming in with a raise. They're coming in, it's, it's, it's the, you're paying the position, not so much the person. It's the position that you're paying. It just so happens that we have the person that we just brought on board to fill the position, right? But it's, it's, we're not paying a person with all the, all of them, we're paying a position, right? And there is, there is room in there based on experience and stuff to, to do that. But as he said, you know, when you look at the superintendent's salary throughout, you know, uh, assistant superintendent's salary throughout the county, this for equal-sized schools, that's the parity that we want to be in. We want to be kind of in the middle and you could adjust it based on, you know, uh, experience. So that's how the process happened. But it's not like, the, like Mike said, it's not a raise. It's a, where the position has changed, it's a brand-new position that's being staffed. Any other comments, questions? All right. So moving on to, do you have anything else for that one? Superintendent's report, that was it?
My items, thank you, sir.
All right, uh, moving on to um, six point one, the creation of a new title, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Negative motion for uh, six point one.
So moved, Kate.
Second to this.
Any discussion?
I do have one question about this. At the bottom, it does say that wording provided by TDWPM. What does that stand for? The, for the title?
That's the lawyers, right?
It's the attorney, it's uh, Tom is joining last month.
Okay, kind of wrong now.
Good.
I would never have got all those names.
You get all the letters. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
And I would say I just, um, you know, I'm very happy with this one. Um, Ms. Lawson, in this case, has been with the district for many years. My children have had her as a principal and so forth, so I have a lot of confidence in her. So I think this is very good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, six point two, uh, creation of a new title, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Professional Development.
So moved, Carl.
Second, Christine.
Any discussion?
Um, I just want to point out, I, I understand all the financial questions, but um, I just really think it's important to focus on this professional development piece. We have a new reading program, we've got a lot of new instructional initiatives, and they're not going to be successful unless we have top-notch professional development for our staff in all areas. And that's something that staff has mentioned for years that, you know, certain groups get professional development, but others don't. So um, I, I really like that the way it makes sense to have this in the HR department together, because it seems to go more hand-in-hand. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, that aside from the finances, the structure of this makes sense to me for instruction.
Okay, any other uh, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Got that. All right, uh, so it's six to one, motion carried. Uh, six point three. Six point three. Can I get a motion for a personnel unpaid leave?
So moved, Carl.
Second, Margaret.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to six point four Personnel Matters. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Katie.
Second to this.
Any discussion?
I have a question. So I remember when the substitute administrative salary was set. It was when we because in the old days, we didn't, you know, principals would cover for each other and that became impossible. And when this was instituted, it was before Dr. Roman was here. This is something that's carried over. We were having trouble finding people to cover a building. So like in an emergency, right? You need somebody there for the day. And I just thought as we look at this, you know, something to look at going forward, we had put high pay and we knew it was a little high because we could not find people. But these are people who have high levels of certification who can step in. There's an emergency in a building. They know what to do legally, you know, they know all the safety stuff. But is that something that we want to look at this year? I mean, except for this year, and I agree with it. But maybe is there a way that we could look at other other districts, what their offerings for substitute principals to make sure that we're more in line? Because we're out of that, again, that dark period where we might not have that difficulty of of filling those positions. I don't know if that's, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we could always look at it. But one of the things that factors in here was years of years of in the in the one of the roles. That's why you'll see some people have different
Yes.
numbers for substitute principal, for example, because some people have more administrative experience in that area than others. So we made it so that
Steps.
you know, the more experience you have, the higher the number goes, right? You know, because they're more sought after, they're hard, they're harder to get.
Right. I agree. I just think it would be interesting to to get a the temperature of of what other districts are charging for that.
We can work on that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I just want to point out that I'm trying to scroll here quickly. We have a okay, we have a couple of support staff retirements that I'd like to acknowledge. So we have three bus drivers, Raymond LaBelle's after nine point eight years is retiring as a part time bus driver. And then we have Fred Newswenger is retiring after five point eight years as a bus driver. And we have Thomas Germano, who's retiring after twenty one point six seven. Tommy, if you're watching, congratulations. So I don't know what you're going to do in the morning now to get coffee at the firehouse, but enjoy your retirement. So congratulations to all the any other discussion? Did I miss any retirements? Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven point one, any other matters deemed necessary by the board? Oh, wait, stop. I forgot to add the one in here.
I was gonna, that was one of the things I was gonna, but I do have a discussion.
Yep, so can I get a motion to enter public participation?
So moved, it's second, Carl.
So I don't have the wording in front of me, but basically, public participation is limited to three minutes per person and keep comments respectful. Would anyone like to address the board?
I covered mine, my emails.
Okay.
Jean Sullivan Jones, I covered in the emails.
More than one? Okay. Since we have no one, we will close public participation. Seven point one, any other matters deemed necessary by the board?
I I'd like to make a statement if I may.
Yeah.
I know there's been some conversation about this outside of the public meeting, but I but I feel like it's important to to make this statement in public form. It has come to my attention that a member of the community has posted to their social media account confidential information discussed during a Board of Education executive session and only available to the superintendent and the members of the board. The other members of the cabinet were not present during that discussion. This is not only a breach of confidence, but according to the New York State School Board Association, constitutes professional misconduct and is grounds for removal from a board. Let me be really clear. I have no information about where this community member got their information and I am making no accusations. However, I consider this a serious issue. And my hope is that this board, one that I consider really high functioning, will not tolerate such behavior. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Any other matters?
Yeah. Just on a little lighter note, the the car that FDR built last year is going to auction Harrisburg, I believe tomorrow. Thursday, Thursday or Friday. No, tomorrow, June 17th, I'm not sure.
It's week.
It'd be interesting. If you get ESPN plus, I think you can watch it. But if you go to, it's MECUM auctions, M E C U M dot com and you can scroll and find out what the estimated price is and what action sold for.
So you're gonna make a bid?
Anonymous, anonymous.
Just curious, what 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 number does it sell for roughly?
Ballpark? Forty to fifty, plus or minus, depends on who's there, who's bidding and how much they want.
So if we get forty grand, that goes back into the winner circle kind of the cycle, the cycle of winning a circle?
The agreement that we have with winner circle and we we did this, we worked with the attorneys on it to be like legal is they they use the money to buy the next car. Winner circle buys the next car and then donates it.
Okay, it's nice. Thanks for that, Carl. Any other matters?
And just quickly, since we're talking about cars, just I know we didn't do pride tonight, but kudos again to the girls cheerleaders for the car wash. My cars never looked cleaner, so great job. And there's a little bit of a backup there, a lot of customers. So great job to the girls.
I donate money. I don't let, I don't want them to touch my car.
Why is that?
Brand new. I don't let anybody touch it. All right, since there are no other matters and we do need a second executive session. So can I get a motion to enter? Well, not yet. I need to appoint a cloak clerk pro tem. So I'd make a motion to Mike, to make Mike our clerk pro tem.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now can I get a motion to enter into our second execu- or second executive session?
So moved to this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we're now in